Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Community Preservation Committee. It is Thursday, December 12th. We are live at the Primetime Building and we're also available via Zoom. The meeting ID is 82908957758, passcode 792298, or by phone at 19292056099. This meeting is also being recorded and can be viewed at a later date via the Town YouTube channel.
Can I interrupt? December 15th.
December 15th. What I was saying.
12.
12, thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order is now 5:39 PM. You could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just quickly, we'll do committee member introductions. I'm Kevin Smith, I'm the chairman.
Dan Pienaar, planning board liaison.
Bill Provo, vice chair, representing the Historic Storage Commission.
Two Digits Conservation Commission.
Dave Eckerson, at-large member and financial clerk.
Jonathan Gell, member of Commission on Disability and PTA quarter year.
All right, so the first thing we have on the agenda is just updated financial reports. Dave, did you get the email that I sent him?
Which, earlier in the month, right after the last meeting.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the only update we had.
So I don't think not much has changed.
Yeah, right, we just confirmed that the playground expenses were recorded correctly on the report that was distributed.
Okay, so we, all the information that we had in our last meeting is what is our current, nothing has changed to date. Serena's just been really good at giving us a monthly report, so we do know exactly where we're at. Under old business, the first thing we had was the CPC year-to-date financial review, which kind of coincides with our financial reports. I don't think we have anything additional to add to that. Okay, and then next, we had Review Discussing Act, CPC-funded project updates. There's also, I don't believe there's any updates from any current funded project, the historical parks and the town clerk are still in the same position that they were at last month's meeting. So nothing has changed there. And then last, under old business, we had just Review Discussing Act, the CPC annual public hearing, which we had decided on January 19th, 2023, 6:00 PM at this location. I just want to thank Elizabeth, as she had said it earlier, she had created a little flyer for us to distribute, you know, obviously in print or through our social media pages. I think that's something that we all had a chance to look at or want to pass it around so everybody can see it.
I was actually able to listen to that, that was very cool.
I think we should vote on whether or not we want to use that as our publication. Everybody can take a quick look at that.
And would that be the bulk of our agenda tonight, or would it just be one item?
So, all right, well, we're gonna, I think what we had decided on last time is that we're gonna pass this on. Was that we're gonna still start at 5:30 and conduct any regular business that we had and then roll into that? And that's strictly just an informational segment, so. Right, I know this hasn't been presented to us, sent to us yet, but there are murmurs of a potential application for eligibility from the library project for that evening, but it will be eligibility, it won't be.
Did it read at 5:00, actually?
Was it 5:00? Okay. Oh, is that, so that's, we left ourselves an hour for our regular business, which is good, and then.
The library thing, can I say something about that?
Um, let's, 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 we can bring that up under new business.
Okay.
So we have, we just think a note, 5 to 6, because our regular meeting. And then 6 till, we'll call it 7. And also, so that has to be posted as well with the newspaper, so I'll reach out to them, because I think it's two weeks prior. So actually, I'll reach out right at the turn of the new year and get that, so that it's scheduled and posted appropriately. Is that what everybody seem, seem happy with the flag there? Nice, good. Thank you, Elizabeth, did a great job, appreciate it.
Okay.
If somebody wants to make a motion to utilize that?
I will, we, put this, accept this flyer before we proceed to do that.
I second that.
I'll second that, with the time change as noted.
Well, the, no, the, so this is, the time change is correct, because this is the actual public hearing. Our regular meeting will be 5 to 6, so that's just a side note.
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's Janam's thing, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other old business? All right, so under new, the first thing we had under new business was the CPA bonding process. I had sent you all, I don't know if everybody had a chance to view it, but I sent you the webinar from the state. Just, it's kind of about a 25-minute overview of bonding, just so we're familiar with it. And the only reason why I sent that out and then I put it on the agenda is because there's certain things going on in town, one, again, being the library, which we can roll into that later. There's also been talks, either with the Board of Selectmen or Conservation have brought up land acquisitions. So I think we just want to be mindful of what that process looks like. So if we do need to use it, we're familiar with the process. One big part of it, and I actually had the opportunity to meet with TA Mullen and Stuart Saginaw, Jonathan was also on the call as part of the Library Committee to answer some questions about bonding. And one thing that we're gonna do, so we know exactly what we're able to do, is Stuart's gonna send me a spreadsheet that we'll give to our town treasurer, and he'll be able to give us our bonding capacities based on like a percentage of our, of what we take in as a committee. So what we'll do is, two minutes. I'll jump on the Zoom and then I'll screen share. Unless, did every, did, didn't you all view it? Or no? Okay.
Yeah, you see it?
Yes. I'm sure it was just at eye level, if you don't care, it's simple detail. If we all had viewed it, I would have probably, we could have, we could have kind of just went into slides and did it that way the whole one.
What are you trying to do? You trying to play it? How long is it?
27 minutes.
27 minutes? 27 minutes? Would it be better to have everybody do it on their own?
Well, I kind of asked that. We didn't have a chance to, so.
All right, we're just summarizing it, and.
And we can do that, so this, want me to go through, want to go through the slides?
Just summarize it, because other than that, I, I'll be leaving.
Okay, let's do that, that's fine. All right. All right, it's kind of what he does anyway, is going through the slides anyway. So this is kind of just quick, who, how popular bonding has been with communities that have adopted CPA, 98. Municipalities have done it, 273 CPA projects and over 436 million in project cost paid for with bonds. And it just goes over what, so it's most typical that it's land acquisitions, because that's typically a big purchase. Also, historic rehabilitation would be of high cost, and then recreation was a little bit lower with it, 74 million. There is a data bank on the CPA's website that shows all of these projects and that have been bonded with what other towns have used this. So you can go in and kind of see how other towns have utilized that money.
Okay, I'm really confused when you say bonding. If, if you purchase land, let's say for open space or conservation or whatever it is, what's it a bond? If you're just purchasing land, as opposed to, let's say, the historical commission building that's born to make sure that it gets done properly?
No, we're talking bonding as far as borrowing. So like how we have a police station bond, so instead of paying, say this, the acquisition of this piece of land was a million dollars.
Yeah.
We don't have a million dollars sitting in our, you know, CPC bank account.
Okay.
So we would spread that out and it would be $100,000 over 10 years. It's essentially a loan. So bonding is just, is a loan program.
Okay.
So that way you're not emptying your bank account to make this purchase or fund a project. You're using the bond.
You probably said all there is to say, just right there.
That's pretty much all there is to it.
Okay.
But we'll flip through. Maxi, can I have you guys sit on our side here, just because the camera's in? Thank you very much.
We did have a bond, though, correct? We would have to, we would have been setting aside money purposes.
Correct. And that's the important part of having that spreadsheet done by the town treasurer, because you want to know before you bond a project, because there's obviously this closing cost that you incur with it, this interest. So you want to make sure that you don't spend beyond your means. So typically, and what Stuart had explained to us was, you, it's nice to have the treasurer break it down as like 10% of your annual hard income, 20, 25%, 50%, so you know what your bonding capacity is. It's no different than if like you applied for a loan based on your, your personal income. It's a real similar process. A lot of these slides that we're gonna flow through are just.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What prompted you to bring this up as an interesting topic for my agenda today?
Well, like I said earlier, the, the possibility of the library project being larger than what we may be able to, and then also the, the conversation that have been, have been had about acquisition of land.
If my, if I may make a somewhat critical statement. The, and I went through this before at a previous meeting about bonding. It's kind of, it sounds like you're bonding people, I don't think it's a very good term, it's actually taking a loan.
Correct.
So you're, you're invested, someone is investing, Wall Street types are investing the bond market into something. And keep in mind, if we're on fixed income here, except for the matched, you know, state matching funds and the fact that 1% of a variable tax base, but that doesn't change very much.
Correct.
And so. So when you're talking about it, it's like when you take a mortgage, you have some free cash, you have money that, say, before you take the mortgage, let's not take a mortgage, let's take home improvement loan, based on your house, you know. The money that you start take, having to pay, and it's typically, it might be 20 years, like 30 years, you know, it's. That money is going to reduce your working capital.
Correct.
There's no one coming in and giving you a free lunch here.
So I don't think anybody's, I, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna, I want to cut you off, just only because this is strictly, so I think that we under, and even the fact that it's on the agenda, is hypothetical in the fact that we don't have a project in force that. Which is fine.
I'm not trying to.
But I think it's still important for all of us to have the knowledge and know what our abilities are.
Well, our capabilities, know the whole story. I do, I.
And I'm trying to fill in.
I think. Unless somebody else on the committee is unaware of how a bond or a loan works, I don't think we need to have that.
I, I, I think that it's risky, because that would mean that this, this committee is going to be bonding outside of the general town who bonds for New School. So this, so this, here's the town of Dayton with two separate bonding groups, the town itself and then a committee within the town.
I don't think, let me, let me, let me suggest, suggest something if I could, for, to cut, at least for today, specifically for today. We all, to some extent, from what everybody is saying, understand the concept of bonding, and I, except for the verbiage of the word bonding. We understand it concepts as, in essence, a loan that you pay interest on. I think for the purposes of today, the only reason it's being brought up is because there is the potential, and we can't, we're, we're starting to get too into the weeds, because nothing's been presented to us yet. So we don't know if we're gonna be asked to bond something for land. We don't know if we're gonna be asked to bond something for the library. And we don't know if they came and even asked us to bond something, what they're gonna show for other dollars. So for example, if it's a half a million dollar bond, is there gonna be another half a million dollars of cash somewhere to go with it? We don't know any of that. And I, I, I think what I'm hearing Kevin saying, what I got from Stuart is, it's simply important to understand the concept, for everyone to understand the concept. We don't have to agree on it tonight, we don't have to agree on what we're doing or not doing. But we just finish for a second. The other thing to it is, the, and, and, and this is the other thing that Stuart said and Kevin is, I hear him saying to me too, is when you bond a project, you're right, it does cut into whatever dollars you have available for any given year, for as long as you have the bond. And that makes a difference on whether you're bonding something for 10 years, 15, 20, or up to 30.
Or not at all.
Or not at all. So you may decide that if a project is gonna take 25, one project is gonna take 25% of your valuable dollars for 10 years or 14% for 30 years, it's not worth it. And I think that we all, to some extent, understand this, we've all had mortgages on our homes, we all understand the concept. So I think it's really just reviewing the concept of it, but to honestly, to get into the weeds when we don't even have any applications for anything put in front of us to consider yet, doesn't make sense. We all know how we feel about it, but it also might depend on the project, whether we want to support it, can support it, is there other dollars, as I said. And again, we haven't even heard from a town treasurer to say, even if we don't have any real dollars, if we have a town treasurer at a meeting and we say, okay, what if we were asked to bond something for 100,000, 500,000, a million, for X amount of time? Like I said, we don't even have to have a project yet, but at least we would know the ramifications of what we would be facing in terms of interest, in terms of.
Right, so that's all I, all I was saying here, this is general.
Yes, very general.
Specific to any.
No, this is not, there is, there is no, and I say this because I was involved with that phone call with Kevin and Mike, as, as Kevin said, there is no pretext here to try and bring something to the forefront that hasn't occurred yet. This is simply an attempt, I think, to educate everyone on the committee here about the process and what it is, and all the aspects that we want to look at, including hearing from the town treasurer and so forth, if we were even to consider anything. We have to hear all these things before anything can ever be put in front of us.
Yes.
Simply general discussion.
Strictly, it's a proactive conversation.
Talking about is this totally an uncomplicated thing.
Yes.
And so it's basically, you don't have, if you had 150K a year, say, currently, something like that, and you took a 30-year, or you issued a 30-year bond, that might cost, it's hard to say.
To say 20.
Maybe a quarter of that, say 20, 30, 40,000 dollars per year.
Right.
In, in paying the bond for 30 years. You will not see that number that we had, that number of free cash, the 140, 50, for 30 years, I'll be dead. And the CPC, I think of it as sort of damaged in a way, because you no longer have the ability to fund medium-priced projects, which is the bread and butter typically of CPCs.
I, I will agree with that.
I don't like the idea that the town would not bring forth to the taxpayers.
But we don't know what.
Why is it?
Is that?
We don't know yet. Money, do you have an answer for that?
If you wanted to bond, you would bond for a specific project, correct?
Correct, but wouldn't you?
Because there is a safety valve, and that safety valve is the town meeting. So you could make your presentation, you could want to bond, but in the end, at town meeting, you would have to get the voters approved.
That's not the issue. The issue is whether, why, why would you not, if that's true, if, if the, if the voters would say vote for a CPC bond, why wouldn't they vote for a bond issue brought up before, before the.
Because it would depend on the specific project.
Not just that.
Town meeting is a political function.
Keep, keep in mind, we can only do, through this, through this committee, there are only certain types of projects.
Correct.
Start with that, there's only certain types of projects.
That does enhance the question. It does, can I answer this question, please? So, when you're talking, so we'll use the police station. The police station, which we've been fortunate enough to use, utilize free cash to play our, our police station bond. If we were gonna just straight, straight out bond, have the town bond a project, that's raising appropriate, where this money is already allocated for these specific projects. So it's more attractive to use CPC money.
I don't think it's a cogent argument, but it is some, it is an argument. However, I can't help but think that, that the town, we'll, we'll say the Board of Selectmen, they decide that we need X number of dollars for this library, and they've exhausted all the free cash, 150K that the voters voted on, and then the, the federal money, which still had to buy the place, which still had to be voted on, which was voted on. But the voters didn't have to pay for anything. I mean, they, well, except 150K, but, but there was, there was enough impetus, an interest in the library to allow, want them, allow them to think that was a good thing, and it was a good thing. I'm not against libraries, certainly. However, any money that, it, I don't like the idea that, of the possibility that the CPC starts looking like a cash cow to escape a tax-raising issue. Right, because this money's already, CPC money is already taken out every year automatically. Well, it has to be voted for, but it's still, it always is. So, the only thing this does is it helps out the leaders of the town, because they don't have to bring this up, which might, that is the entire purpose of the CPC, is if we have, and so let's take, for example, let's take the word "library" out of the project, because it just happens to be what the building is used for. It's a historic resource. So the approach you want to take is we have a valuable historic resource in town, and there's a possibility that the ask of that project might be beyond what we could fund at a one-time payment, so you could possibly bond it, but that decision gets made by us. That doesn't get made by, you know, the Board of Selectmen, it doesn't get made by the library committee or the presenting. It's strictly hypothetical. The real problem here, I think, is that, it's not a problem, because you can go ahead and do it. You don't need, I can vote no on it, it's still gonna pass, but I have the right at least to, to say something. I think.
You absolutely do, if a project is put before us.
I think it hurts the CPC, because you eliminate a certain, say it's up to 25% of our money that we get.
Well, that's why, and that's why as collectively, as a group, we have to decide that.
We have to see that, again, in, in practical terms, because of the length of the bond.
Oh, I, I can agree with you on that, and that's why, again, but we're speaking on my, and that's why it's so important to get the documentation from the treasurer, because you want to see how that would affect us long-term.
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't need a figure from, we don't need a bond to come in front of us for anything. We don't have to have any dollar value of a bond put in front of us for any reason.
I, I'm not, I'm not saying.
I agree with that. To have, to have the treasurer just give us.
Just getting people, getting people to agree that you lose spending power.
Absolutely. I, I don't think anybody would.
And does anybody think that's a good idea?
But I don't think that that's the, tonight, that's not the discussion for tonight.
No.
I don't think anybody is gonna disagree with you, honestly, that, look, if there's 125,000 dollars and you're funding 20, if we have 125 per year for the town, and we're funding 20% of something that's automatic for the next, no matter how many years it is, that we've lost that value in terms of what we have each year.
So, so, that's all I'm trying to get at.
And no one here is gonna disagree.
You agree at least.
What we have to discuss ultimately is.
I understand.
Whether or not it's worth it.
Yes.
If the town came and said, you know, they could come and say, look, this is a two and a half million dollar project, but we're asking for 20% for 400,000, so they're not, they may or may not tell us how.
All right, all right. Let's, let's. So. We're just gonna buzz through this quick, so we all have an idea of how CPA bonding works then. So one, one big key point on this is up on the screen right now, is you can only bond against your local surcharge. So we can only bond against that 1% that we're bringing in.
Oh.
So you, because the, again, the state matching fund is so variable that you can't include that as part of, you know, your, your bonding limits. Just like any other warrant article that we write, it needs to be approved at town meeting, but it doesn't require a ballot vote. So it's not like when we adopted CPA.
At a town meeting, can the population say, you don't want to give 1% this year?
No. That would have.
That's locked in.
That's locked in unless, well, certainly somebody could write a warrant article, but what you would be doing is you would be, you'd be removing your, the CPA agreement. So you can, you can vote to, we could, you could vote to raise it to 2, 3%, if you wanted to. So you could increase the amount of your surcharge, and you can also opt back out of the CPA. So, but somebody would have to write that warrant article and opt out of CPA, which would be, it's almost unheard of. It's happened a couple times.
One thing about the binding, you're talking about this being approved at town meeting, I think this may be approved, this may come up later in the slide, is because it's a bond, it would require a two-thirds approval, not a 51%.
Correct.
So that's just because it's a bonding issue that any approval by the town at a town meeting would require two-thirds.
But separately, you bring up a fair point, which is at some point in the future, I'm not suggesting how and why or where.
No.
It may make sense for the town to consider going from 1% to 1.25 or 1 and 1/2, simply because as life goes on, there are projects and everything becomes more expensive.
Conversation.
But taxes, taxes go up, and so that 1% is gonna go up.
Yeah, right. That's, we, that's a.
I think, one last thing I'm gonna say, and I think I did, this will sum it up. Instead of coming out of the tax base, which you would have if you approached the. if you approached the, the town, the town citizens for a bond issue, it would come out of money that's already acquired by law, basically, one percent. Okay. So the voters are more inclined to vote for that CPC element because it doesn't worry them that it might raise taxes.
Correct.
And I don't like that idea because it's an easy escape route for the selectmen or whoever, the town administrator.
That's a fair, that is a fair way to look at it.
I think, I think it's very tempting to take the money out of CPC, which will never come back, and with, it's a thirty year, it's not gonna come back typically, and it's a long time. And that's the only thing I'm concerned about, is that it's an easy way to avoid, void a voter run.
Right, there's such a small window, though, of eligible projects. It's really not, like, they can't, you know, they can't say, oh, we need a police car. That, this, we're, we're a very specific committee, where we're only funding very specific projects that I think typically would not come before, before, by the board of selectmen or by, you know, a normal, you know, any other committee.
I just have one more thing, trying to follow up. So if you take a bond, certainly you're gonna be paying interest.
Yes.
The interest amount that you pay is gonna eventually take away from any other project that you might have coming in.
Well, that's again
It's going to reduce the, the scope of CPC in doing other projects.
Absolutely. So right here, the next slide is work with municipal officials to determine what amount you can afford to bond. Obviously, the interest rate is gonna change, but if we had, you know, our treasurer Paul Reynolds give us this report tomorrow, it would be based on what the interest rates are right now, and that interest rate is gonna change, but it's still gonna be in the ballpark. But again, yeah, it's a, it's the total payment. It's not just the amount of the project.
I just clarified one, I was, I think, some, it was just David, but it sounded actually correct, is that the CPC does not issue the bond, the town issues the bond. The CPC is under the auspices of a CPC sort, but the town issues the bond, so it's really the county, the town treasurer, the town's, town's reading, that are all us, that are on the board.
Right, it's, it's our recommendation, it's just we're making the recommendation. One thing that does come up too, and then we might get to that, let me scroll before I don't want to say it before it comes up.
It's probably in there. I think it's a little stronger than that. I think the bond would be written such that the town was obligated to use the CPC's revenue.
Correct.
Right.
Yes, and one big thing, so when we get down, this is just kind of an example of another, of a project, so like, with this one here, it was one point seven nine million dollars for twenty years at four and a half percent, principal payment and interest. The annual debt repayment for that project over twenty years is a hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So that's just an example of what, if we were gonna fund a one point eight million dollar project at four and a half percent interest, that's how much, that would be all of Titan's CPA funds. So like, as that for an example, is something that we would never do because we would completely, to us, CPA funds.
How much would we do?
We don't know.
Why not?
Because we don't have an office from the town accountant, and we don't have a project in place.
No, 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 in general terms, on a project, period, a project, how much money would you expect to be available to do a bond?
That, that's for the committee of nine to discuss and decide.
Right.
So, let's, well, let's take, for example, use, when I presented the playground, which was just north of two hundred thousand dollars. Say we didn't have a surplus, we, you know, at the time, we were sitting on close to a million dollars in our bank account. So we had the bill, or, you know, at the time, that, the members of that committee had the ability to take two hundred thousand and just say, yes, we'll issue it. But if you didn't, and, but you, the committee really wanted to fund the project, well, they could have said, well, we can't give you the whole two hundred right now, but we can bond it and give you twenty thousand a year over the next ten years, you know, plus obviously interest. But that's, that's at the discrepancy of the entire committee to make that decision on any project.
Well, I agree, but I, I do think.
And that's something, you're a hundred percent correct, that
I said, I don't want, I don't want to, I've overdone it at this point.
But if a project comes before us, then we, we need to make that decision. Is it worth it to us to bond it or not?
Yes, it would depend on the specific case in which you're talking about.
Just lost my place. So this, again, you can bond up to thirty years, that's just per the state. All right, so this is kind of an important part of it. When you are gonna do a bond, it's very important when you write the warrant article that it's under the authority of chapter forty-four B. If you don't have the article written that way, it will automatically get bounced back, and you won't be eligible to bond those, those funds.
Very cool point, which is you can mix it. You could say, we're gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars out of our existing, and we're gonna bond five hundred thousand.
Correct.
You can mix and match. You don't have to do all the bonds, so those are options that you have.
And then also, like Dan had mentioned earlier, two-thirds vote needed to, to pass, no ballot required. This is more, this has less to do with us and more to do with accountant, the accountant and the treasurer, but CP, CPA and non-CPA projects can be in one bond, but that's, I think that's well beyond what we're, our scope, what we need to worry about. Just saying that here, now, we need to make sure that we include that in our budget every year, that we have that debt payment if we did bond something. I did bring this, so I actually, I should have prefaced this by saying, I had the opportunity to speak last night and present our new application process to the board of selectmen. They had asked me to come in and just show them the new process and what we had all created together and put on the website. One thing that, not to say it would happen, but one thing that can happen is if we have a CPA bond, and like this past year, we, where we had that surplus of free cash because of the reimbursement from the school, the town could also choose to make a payment on our bond using that free cash. But vice versa can't happen. You can't use CPA funds to
Well, in the case of, mixing like that, where the, the town would share the cost of that payment. In that case, why does the CPC have to be involved at all? What advantage to the town? Why can't the town just take the bond, issue a bond of the amount it needs to do the job that it has?
Because that would be raising appropriately.
It would what?
That would be a raise inappropriately or take from free cash warrant article. So if we didn't have
No, we're talking about a bond here, not free cash.
There's another
But you have to pay for a bond.
But there's also another reason. The more that the town goes out to bond, the more value bond rating goes. The more that bond rating goes, the higher the interest we pay. So the law, CPC is a great law.
So, so, so money.
I asked that question last night, and got it from Sierra.
Yeah.
The town economist. That by binding through CPC, it doesn't affect our bond rating at all.
Correct, and that's, yeah, because it's guaranteed. The money is guaranteed to come into one percent because it's just, I mean, in theory, the town could not want to do that. It may not want to do, they want to, they may, I mean, they can do anything they want to the town. But anyway, when you're paying these bonds that you currently have to the town, say the police say, I know you had to get some kind of a bond for the police station. You didn't pay for it out of cash.
So far, they have been paying out of the operating budget.
You've been paying the bond payment out of free cash,
Right.
but you still had to issue a bond to get the money in upfront to construct the building.
Yeah.
Okay. So when you're paying that now, currently, the the, the bond payment, does that come out of free cash? It must, right? Or do you, or do you
It has been paid out of free cash.
Okay, otherwise, if there was, if your free cash got kind of low, and the bond payment was coming up, what would you do? You'd have to go to the voters.
We do have the option to go for a debt exposure at any time, so.
There's, there's no free lunch on this. I used, I've been in the financial sector. I know what's going on there with the bond model. I know how bonds work, municipal bonds.
Well, the other, the other option is cuts. You know what I mean?
Well, I just don't like to, to lose our ability to pay out money out of just our free account. I don't want to be crimping that account because we have to be responsible now for a bond payment for thirty or twenty years. I don't, I personally would, if I had a company, I would not allow that kind of thing to happen because it would screw up my free cash. I need that, you need that.
Which is acceptable, and if a project comes before us, and that's how you feel about that project or bonds in general, well, then you're right as a member to vote no on it. We still want to just get through this so that we all have an understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Another kind of just little side note is if you do bond a project, and it's, so every year we designate ten percent for each category. If that bond payment is more than that ten percent that you designate for either open space, historical, or housing, you don't technically have to designate the ten, ten percent for that category because you're satisfying that requirement by paying the bond every year for that project from that group. And this, this gives you that example. So because like in this example, they funded an open space, the open space has a, a bond debt service of one hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. This town reserves fifty-two thousand five hundred, so they're well over and above that ten percent requirement, so they don't have to put that ten percent in for open space every year. If, and you brought this up earlier, because essentially getting rid of the one percent is revoking the CPA. So you have to either keep that in place, you technically, you cannot revoke it without keeping it in place long enough to pay that bond, or you have to have enough cash on hand to pay off that bond at the time of relocation. Now, that's for, that's pretty much the end of the, the slides. I still encourage everybody, whether you do real bonding or not, watch the video if you have a minute, because when Stuart explains it, it's gonna, he gives a little bit more information on each, each topic, and he has obviously been involved with this process much longer than any of us, so he, he has a little bit more knowledge, and it makes a little more sense when you listen to him talk about it than when we just discussed it together. There's really nothing, we don't have to snowballing on this. I just wanted to put that information out there so that we would all have it. So next, under new business, review, discuss, and act CPC member participation. I'll just pre-preface this by saying that, yesterday, I, he didn't reply to the entire group of us when I did send out the, the agenda. Tom Berquen did reply and said, I'll be there, you know, via Zoom. He, he's not with us. He hasn't been with us since, I believe, the July meeting was the last meeting that he attended.
Fifth meeting he's missed.
So I think he was, if I remember correctly, we'd have to go back and just double check minutes, but I think it was July he was in attendance. He hasn't been in attendance for August, September, October, November, and now December, so this is the fifth in a row. And clearly, he's, he's receiving our correspondence. He even reached out, I think it was prior to the September meeting via text to me and said he would be there, and then he wasn't. So I think I'll open up the floor for discussion of how, and we had prior discussions.
Well, he's tying up the poll.
When, when have you checked the legal counsel or with Mr. Muller as to whether or not you need to go into executive session in this discussion since you're talking about possible discipline of someone that's receiving a statement, assuming they own
There is no statement. This is a voluntary position. So, and it, it actually is, I have to try to find it. It's in a, it's in our bylaws.
I mean, I don't know. I'm just asking.
So we had talked about this, I think, in October, that it was in the bylaws, that if you, if you miss three consecutive meetings without a reasonable excuse, that it's within the power of the committee to make a recommendation to have that, that person removed from the committee, if they so choose.
I'm not sure if, if it's supposed to be done in open session or private. That's why I just wanted to ask you, will you go any further?
Yeah, there's nothing in the bylaw that mentions any of that.
I don't want this to be
I thought there was, I think somewhere I saw, going through the bylaw list one day, I think I remember seeing two different definitions of of absent without leave kind of thing. One of them was what Kevin was talking about, which is, I think, in the CPC bylaw? Is that right?
No, it's, it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to pull it up right now because I think I'm pretty sure it's in our committee, was it committee handbook?
But I saw another one that, that said that if that condition occurs of three consecutive absences without leave, that person, this is not a perfect quote, that person should be considered no longer on that committee. Well, I think it was, because I, I don't
I'll read this, I'll hold it up right now. So this is in our
I thought it might, it might take like a long time to find that, so.
No, I, well, I got the, the first, so in our board and committee handbook, section two, point eight, which is on page eight of the handbook, termination. In rare circumstances such as continued unexplained absences or conflict of interest, the appointing authority may ask for a member's resignation or, if necessary, revoke the appointment. Also, the appointment of a committee member who fails to attend three consecutive meetings may be terminated. Prompt written notifications, the committee member will be given by the appointing authority in the event of such action. So our, I think our duty is, we want to move on this matter, is we need to, so the board of selectmen is the appointing authority for at-large members. So we would need to make the recommendation that the board of selectmen
Right, because otherwise, you have, you create a situation where you have taken out a member slot because someone is staying home and not showing up. And I've had, I had a question by someone in the town who was interested in getting on the CPC. And, and that wouldn't be possible as long as Tom is, is doing his absence without leave thing.
Correct.
Because it still shows up on the town website that he's a member.
Mr. Chairman, just to, to get this discussion on the table for the open concept of, of being able to do that, I am going to make a motion that we consider, that we ask the board of selectmen to consider ending the relationship between Tom Berquen and the CPC as a member of the CPC effective this meeting, the December two thousand twenty-two meeting. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
One point, and I don't think we can set when it occurs, it would be, the selectmen would say, we can't say it's effective this meeting. The selectmen would make it effective at a certain date. But other than that, I can't.
So the reason I put in effective December is because this, this, there's no meeting going forward before the selectmen would meet again. The other thing that I'm gonna say for the purpose of discussion, I don't remember exactly how we did it in our last meeting when it came up, or a couple of things that have come up. But we have, I know as a committee, through the chair, and even through the town administrator, made several attempts to ask Mr. Berquen to participate, to provide certain material, to inform us if he can't be participatory as to why. So I think that we've done our due diligence, okay, to give Mr. Berquen ample opportunity. I know, I, I would expect if I didn't do my responsible thing too, and I'm using that word deliberately, to keep a committee informed if I couldn't be there for any reason for extended period of time, or get joined by Zoom or other methods if they're available to me, that any committee would potentially make the same decision with regard to Jonathan Gabb. You know, I know he's been a member for a long time. He's had, he's done a lot of great work on behalf of the CPC, and I respect that, and I appreciate that. But I think that we need a full committee in order to really, you know, have, when we have things presented to us, we need to be able to vote and have all members present.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Whole, we had an event tonight where Dave Marble couldn't be present because he had a commitment with the cable committee to set up for the conservation meeting, so he couldn't attend it. If we had, you know, a large subject matter, it does make a difference whether or not you have a full committee to, to discuss and vote on, on, on important issues, so. Especially as an at-large member, where it's not appointed by another board of committee, it is a valuable seat to the committee. I'm in, I'm in favor of
And as we've all, already briefly, without going into, because we don't know where things are going, we've already discussed tonight, we're gonna have some, some things coming in front of us potentially that we're gonna have to use serious consideration to, and we're gonna want to hear every voice in this committee that's available to hear.
Could ask, Mr. Hall, so how would we do this? Would we send you a letter?
You would, you would take a vote this evening. You would send a letter to the board of selectmen. I would put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth for us to vote. If the board votes to support your request, we would then post it. At that point, you decide how you wanna do the selection process for applicants. We're gonna just open it. The question I would ask you tonight, if you do it, you want thirty days or two weeks? For it, the posting.
Let's, 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 let's take a, we'll take a roll call vote on this first and then we can move on to that. Okay? Yeah, now we can vote.
Okay.
You wanna say if we can.
I think we're voting to make a recommendation to the selectmen. I wonder if we need to prepare the letter and vote on that. Oh, yeah, I just crossed all the Ts here. Because if we vote now, a letter's gonna have to be prepared.
Um, I think all the letter's gonna say is exactly what the motion is asking.
Yeah, I think it's, it's pretty cut into, there's not gonna be a lot of language in that.
No, so you're not looking for background then?
Well, I thi, I think I would give a brief explanation of, you know, explaining the amount of absences and, and lack of.
Just a copy of your policy attached to the other members so they.
Right, yeah, I'll, I'll reference that this in the committee handbook that, you know, this is the reason why we can't.
Okay, okay, so fine.
Yeah, as long as everybody is okay.
All right.
I'll go in favor.
If, if I vote in favor.
Out of the nine, nine for my selection.
I'm just prepared.
Okay.
I'll put it on the agenda for the twenty-eighth, but I will need, might really, I'll say about that. I will need the.
Yes, I will get that out. I know that our next week's a short week, so I'll make sure I get it to him by, by Monday. So that way, because I think he's preparing for the following week's meeting this week. So. And I think we can briefly just talk about it. I don't, until, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't know if we should. I said, we certainly can't if somebody wants to bring it up. I don't know if we wanna talk about what the length of time or the, what process we wanna use for a new applicant until this issue is resolved. I don't know, I don't know if that would be appropriate.
I think it's premature. It's likely an assumption that hasn't occurred yet.
You can't, you wouldn't be able to take an application.
Well, I, I think, so Mr. Hall had just asked if what length of time we wanted to keep it open, but the seat's not open and I think it would be inappropriate at this point.
The, the thing is that I understand, uh, special is that we're taking action to make a seat evoked and at that time, I'll take an action to post something. So first make the seat evoked and send them a vote. As long as he's asking, a long time posted before, so that they don't have to wait for another meeting.
Correct.
Posted. So if you could tell them now.
They, well, they are essentially, so I, I think this is my, my take on this. Essentially, you, you are the appointing authority. Uh, we would have to, you know, take in applicants and we would make our recommendation to you, but I think that would be at the discretion of the board of selectmen to.
I, I think he just wants our recommendation. What is it? Two weeks in a month?
I think if, if we wanna keep things flowing, two weeks.
When's, when's next course? What meeting?
The twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth.
So whatever, whatever after the board votes, I would then say, anyone interested, we are posting the position today. I need to know. And anyone who was interested would submit a letter of interest to Karen Brady or Leanne Curran in the selectman's office. And all the applicants would then come to you for your, whatever.
Right, so at January meeting, we would review applicants and then we essentially wouldn't get a new member until February, you know, to, just to go through the process. I think whatever would, if, if it's thirty days, what is, what is, is that what's the goal? Is it?
Two weeks or thirty days.
Well, if we do thirty days, then we're not even.
We're outside of our.
We're not gonna be reviewed till February and have an answer to March.
Yes, so we have, we probably wanna go with a two-week.
Two weeks, okay.
Yeah, so we have it in time for our, for our January meeting.
Right.
Especially given that your meeting is falling between two holidays and it's.
And we'll expedite it on our end too. As far as when you have someone, you know, a candidate, you have to present to us the vote. So we're close together.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Timely fashion.
I'll entertain a motion to open up the posting if, upon a successful vote of the board of selectmen to revoke the current position for two weeks.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that if the board of selectmen votes in the affirmative to open the slot, the position of Mr. Berkwen as of December twenty-eighth, that at that time, we also ask the selectmen to vote for a fourteen-day period, which would take us, I believe, until January twelve for future applicants to apply for, for the open seat on CPC to be presented at our January nineteenth meeting for discussion.
Five P M on the twelve.
Yep, five P M on the twelve. No limit inside P M on the twelve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, anybody else have any other new business? I did, but I don't know.
Yes.
Have we, have we got it all out in the middle? Well, overcome by conditions.
All right, online. I'm gonna just bring a point to your, right. So, I had to believe with this. If we are going to hear in January from the library, it starts eligibility. The question we need to be asking ourselves is which of our CPC categories does this project fit into? The only one I could see fitting into is a historic resource project. Anointing the extent that what they're asking for is funding to preserve that building as a historic resource. And if I understand the, uh, regulation, right, that would also require, I don't know, maybe it's already been done. It was also required to be a historic commission to determine that that building was a very historic.
Yes, so they are going before the historic commission just prior to our January meeting. And so you'll, you'll, you'll actually, you'll hear this conversation prior to it even hitting this table.
Well, at the last, uh, which was Tuesday, it's funny, both of them the same week, which is unusual. Second Tuesday, Thursday, but anyway, Ken Pacheco was there as, as a, you know, non-voting member. And he said that, maybe you've already heard this, that we, they'd be submitting the, uh, an application of eligibility for the library work on, in January for our January. That's, that's all I know.
So that's what was delivered to me last evening at the board of selectmen.
So as, as, as the liaison between here and the library committee, the historical commission is meeting, I believe it's January tenth. I may have the date wrong, but I'm quite sure it's January tenth to vote for the project up or down and to hear, to hear how the project is presented to them. Assuming they voted in the affirmative, in the positive, then the plan is for the outside contracting firm to present the initial application to us on January nineteenth for eligibility. The application would be presented by the outside vendor who they've contracted, who has a lot of background in doing historical projects. That's their purview. That's what they focus on more than anything. So they know the rules and the regulations of what they would be asking for, how they have to ask it, what they can couch and ask, what they cannot couch and ask because of their, of their background and what they've done in this, which is why they were chosen for this project specifically. Having said that, it's important to keep in mind that the application they're submitting on January nineteenth for consideration is only really for us to determine if they meet the criteria that we have to follow through the interior department and so forth.
That's, that's, no, that's incorrect.
Well, go ahead.
So you're gonna, when they present their application for eligibility, we're strictly, we're gonna go off of our appendix with the yes or no, are they trying to, you know, rehabilitate, preserve? Then, once we get to yes or no, it is or is not eligible, at that point, that's when the heavy lifting, we decide that yes, it is eligible, that's when the heavy lifting will begin because then we'll move on to the application funding, where we have to check off those boxes.
It's a little tricky because when they come for eligibility, they're gonna have to already have, you know, partitioned the project in a way that will fit our criteria. See what I'm saying? They can't just come with a generic convert building to library kind of description of the project. It's gotta be more specific.
No, I know they're, I know they plan to come with a fairly descriptive narrative of what they want to do.
Okay, so.
Yes, you, you, and you are correct in essence that, yeah, we don't, we would expect more than a generic statement saying that we're doing X, Y, Z.
You guys understand why I brought up this in here, yes.
But where, again, too, the heavy lifting comes in and that's why we expanded on our application process. And Dan pulled in a lot of the information, those, the essentially spreadsheets that itemize how you're spending that money. That's, I think, where the majority of our scrutiny will come in to make sure that they're not trying to use something outside of what is eligible. So, uh, we certainly, I agree that we have to be careful with the application of eligibility, that it's gonna actually meet the requirements, but I think it'll be a little bit more intense on the backend if, if it moves to that point.
All right. I know it's a little hypothetical.
Yeah.
And I know they have, they have a lot of work to do to get that, but it's. Yeah, I, I'm very supportive of the library project. I'm just saying, I want our committee to do.
Uh, do, absolutely. Have any other new business? Um, review, discuss and act a meeting minutes of November seventeen, twenty twenty-two. Elizabeth sent us all up to that. You did make that one correction, right? Okay, that was the only little thing that I had in there. Everybody had a chance to review. Um, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from eleven seventeen, twenty twenty-two. So I have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting date, January nineteenth, right?
Five P M.
Yeah, so, all right, we'll move it down to five P M and then we'll have our.
Are we meeting here because of a?
Yes, we still are gonna be, that's what we discussed in the prior meeting.
That's what it says.
One thing, I just, it's kinda like at everybody's discretion, but Elizabeth had brought up, kind of, I don't know what kind of turnout we could get. We could get nobody, we could get ten people, we could get twenty-five people. Do we wanna, I mean, everybody's either willing to do it or not do it, supply some form of like refreshments just in case we do get a turnout? And whether somebody wants to pick up a box of donuts and a box of jelly, we can kind of just.
I mean, I went through this recent, in the other building, old town, far left here, clicking through the same rules. Uh, you guys talk to the board, yeah?
Really?
Just do that.
Even if it's prepared, huh?
Yeah.
You should put that on the, uh, flyer that. Freshman.
Well, then people will come if you did. So we put refreshments, then people will come for free refreshments.
But yeah.
Just change to cater dinner.
Well, I think if it is, it's a little, it's not so much like a food permit process, it's just a blessing, right?
Is this the blessing? I just had, um, prepackaged foods, like bags of chips and pretzels, prepackaged and bottles of soda.
Yeah.
Just don't have to.
You know what, though, it's, it's worth checking, but we may not have to because they already provide food here and they have authorization to do it and they do have lunches here.
Well, it doesn't hurt to, it better, it doesn't hurt to check it. I mean, sometimes I like to say better to ask, but if we have this, yeah, that permission, but here, let's, we can do the right thing.
I think if I put refreshments on the flyer, it entices people to come.
But what I'll do, I'll just send it because I don't think we need to vote on it or anything like that. I'll just send out an email, maybe like two weeks prior to that, after I, you know, send it in the newspaper article. And like, if everybody wants, we can just kind of agree, yeah, I'll bring this, I'll bring that. I don't think we need to go nuts, but it would be nice.
Okay.
And I think it does, if you send it through. People will show up for coffee and snacks, so. Um, we don't, well, we had public input there and.
Yeah, and I, I think that also the agenda is gonna, if that article that we just talked about is presented to us from library or something, I think that will bring people to the meeting to.
Yes.
Simply to hear what's presented. So.
So we don't have anybody else with us via Zoom, just us now. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned at six forty-three. Thank you all.
Here comes that click.
Does anybody know the name of the gentleman that was there?
Aye, thank you.
Do I put his name down as public present?
There's a member of the public, two members of the public.